City Municipal Council for October 19th, 2021. So, welcome. Glad to see everybody here. All council members are present. And our first issue is the approval of the minutes for September 21st, 2021. Do we have comments? Any issues about the minutes? Otherwise, I will take a motion.
I'll move we approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll go to the discussion items. The first discussion item is discussion on a land use text amendment on short term rentals. And Zach, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So yeah, this is a text amendment. I came before you guys a couple of times. I think once in April and then once in June, kind of talking about short term rentals. That's all I seem to talk about lately. So we did have a, a public hearing with the planning commission. And so now it's before you guys to kind of go through that. So a lot of what I'm going to be going over is pretty much the same as what I presented in June, but I'll kind of go through it a little bit quicker this time. Please interrupt if you have any questions or comments or anything. Happy to answer them at that time. So why are we here? We've received a lot, a few requests from residents to look into allowing short term rentals in the city. This is to review the proposed regulations that were provided to you guys in your packets. And the planning division staff, we've been working on crafting ordinance for this for over a year now. So, so just a real recap on what short term rentals are. We, we see those as any lodging or accommodations of people being for a period of less than 30 consecutive days. And we also consider that as part of a dwelling or a portion thereof as well. If you guys do remember, we conducted a survey in December of 2020, December 10th through the 31st. Included about 12 questions and we got over 600 responses with about 385 kind of written responses as well, with any additional information. So some of the short term rental pros and cons. So some of the pros are we're able to, able to track and monitor that short term rentals that are already existing in the city. We do know that they, they are existing currently. This does provide a path for people wanting to list their property. Like I said, we, we do have it occurring already in the city and we're trying to make sure that we are using that accordingly and making sure that it's regulated fairly. Also allows for income generation for property owners. And then also increase in transient room tax revenues. I did get some information from Brenda today. We approximately received about $76,000 in transient room tax from the period of June through September. And about, I believe, 7% of that has come from a, from at least two short term rental companies. So that's about, I, I think we calculated it out about 4,000 and some change that we're, that Murray City is already accepting, even though we don't allow short term rentals in the city. So that, that's kind of a little messy there. But some of the cons for short term rentals, reduction, potential reduction in housing stock. If, if you have people buying these up and renting them out, then you can have some issues there. Reduce, potentially reduces affordable housing, impact to community cohesion and competition with hotels.
Zach?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think that's interesting because I just started really thinking about that with affordable housing over the past little while and I didn't realize, but it does, doesn't it? I'm, I'm glad that you said that on there because I was a little, kind of caught myself thinking the opposite.
Yeah.
A little bit, but that's more for ADU.
Yep.
The, for, for, yeah, what we call short term rental. Yeah, that doesn't help.
Right.
With affordable housing.
And when it comes to ADUs, we specifically don't allow, if this were to go forward, we would not allow short term rentals in ADUs anyway. We, we have outlawed that in the ADU ordinance that you guys recently adopted. So that that's not even a possibility. So if, if an ADU is constructed, that's for long term residential purposes. And that's, that's really important. We as staff are really passionate about ADUs and their long term impact on, on providing some additional affordable housing. So with that, this was, this was kind of interesting. One of the questions in the survey, as a resident of Murray City, are you aware of short term rentals operating in your neighborhood? A vast majority, 432 or 70, almost 71% said they were not aware of that. However, in January of 2021, when we, when we had a discussion with a company called Granicus Host Compliance, they're the ones that kind of keep, they collect data on short term rentals. They, they look at a lot of different sites. I think it's over 40 that they look at. They found 126 rental listings just in January that are happening within Murray City currently with, with no regulation at all. So even though about those, those 400 people aren't aware, and you can see here in this, in this photo, all these red and blue dots, they're where they're existing. So they're happening all over Murray. So a little bit more information that Granicus gave, provided to us. The median nightly rate was around $80 per night that people are getting for a room there. And these are typically single family homes, 65% of that. And then about 68% of it is the entire home, which is kind of interesting. The other 30% is a partial home.
Zach?
Yeah.
The nightly rate of $80, is that for a room or for a whole house?
So I would assume, I believe it was for the whole, I can't say, I don't know for sure.
That seems awfully cheap.
It does seem very cheap.
For a whole house.
Yeah, it does. But I mean, if we're looking here, the unit types are, are stating about 68% of those are entire homes. So I would assume it, it's somewhere in there. I apologize. I don't, I don't remember. January was a long time, a long time ago. And I don't remember the, the discussion there.
Short term rentals. My best, my best guess is the information provided to us from Granicus is that they would have taken all 150, 120 of those short term rentals, whether they were single rooms or an entire family and just done an average. So it's, it's probably split somewhere between like, yeah, that would be low for an entire home and high for a single room. So I think that's, that's the most likely.
Yeah, I see it says median, so, so that makes more sense. Thank you.
Sorry, I kind of fumbled there for a minute. All right. So just wanted to go over a couple more of the questions that were asked on our survey and kind of the responses. So question four was should Murray allow short term rentals and select all that apply? So we had about 609, we had 609 respondents. 253 or 41% said none of the above, they shouldn't be allowed across the board. So that was about 40%. The rest, you could select more than one option here. So these don't all just add up total. So you know, you see single family homes, townhouses, condos, apartments and manufactured or mobile homes. So it's kind of all over the place. The, the real point here is that 41% say not at all, don't allow it at all. Next is should short term rentals only be allowed if they are occupied? Again, this one, it's a little bit, is about the same. 250, 202 said neither, short term rentals should not be allowed at all. That, that's come down a little bit to 33% there. And then we have yes and no. As you know, in the regulations, we are requiring a home, the, yeah, a homeowner to live on the property at least 183 days out of the year.
And then the other, the rest of the time, no one has to be there.
They don't, they don't have to live there, no. They don't have to be on, on, onsite at that time. But they do have to have contact information for somebody that would be available to go to the property and address any issues within an hour of, of any complaint coming in. That's written into that regulation as well.
Yeah, I have some concerns about that.
Yeah, for sure. Then question eight, with one being the most important and seven the least, please kind of, please rate each potential short term rental related issue. We, we think we have tried to address each one of these issues in the ordinance. With noise, the party house, I think having that, that contact be reached within an hour or having the person live onsite is very important. That way they can mitigate those problems there at that time. And parking, we'll get into the regulations about that in a little bit. As well as with traffic, the trash, that's been addressed in, in the, the proposed ordinance as well. That in the information packet that's provided to the homeowner, that that has dates, times of when the trash is being picked up, when that needs to be placed out and when needs to be picked back up into the, into the residence as well. And then also there was crime and property maintenance. And again, I think that goes back to those homeowners being there and not just some foreign person that, that, that is not in the city or owns the home and has a vested interest in it at that point. Then would have, would having contact information for an owner or manager who'd be available 24 hours a day help address some of the short term rental concerns? About 54% said yes and 45% said no. I don't know really what to glean there. I think most people would appreciate having that kind of information. But I can't get into the heads of the, the 45% that said no. So additional considerations that we have to look at is application processing, the, the additional staff time to develop and implement a, excuse me, permitting process. And then also processing those both for the zoning side and the business licensing side. Enforcement, I know that this, this comes up a lot in planning commission, that they are concerned with code enforcement and being able, they feel like there, there needs to be additional code enforcement involved. We think this can be addressed by offsetting that with the fees to get a short term rental licensing permit, help to kind of offset that. And then also there is, there is a lot of talk up at the state at doing possible preemption. It's very much on their minds right now. I foresee something probably coming in, in this next legislative session. Not sure what that's going to look like, but I do know that they are talking about it quite extensively. So. So now we'll actually get kind of into the meat of, of, of the ordinance. And that's, you know, the different types of short term rentals. There are industry wide, they kind of categorize them into these three buckets. Hosted sharing, meaning the property owner is onsite and there while renting out like a portion of their house. So you know, a couple of rooms or things like that, however, however they want to do that. Unhosted sharing, meaning that the owner leaves the home during a guest's stay. And then dedicated vacation rental, which means that the, the property owner doesn't live onsite, doesn't live there at all. So we are proposing having an owner occupancy requirement. So hosted sharing would be allowed to operate 365 nights per year, being that they are there in, in the, in the dwelling. Unhosted up to 182 nights per year. This would be, so say like if somebody owns, they live up here most of the year. And then during the winter, they go down to St. George or whatever and, and spend the winter down there. Then they could rent theirs up here to, you know, ski people or whoever wants to come over. And then we are proposing the dedicated vacation rentals not be allowed at all. So I, I think that's at least a good first step right now. As we look at initial ordinances, maybe in the future we can revisit that. But at least right now, I don't think that's appropriate. So kind of going back to the, the survey, this kind of goes back to where we kind of got that information. Should Murray City limit the maximum number of nights per year a dwelling may be rented as a short term rental? 53% said yes and 46% said no. So we're trying to strike a balance here on, on what, what's allowed and what's not, what we propose to be allowed and what not. So then I think this was a leftover piece that I have, because we, we talk about these in the next one. So I'm going to skip this slide, just forget you saw that one. So parking requirements. In addition to the two off street parking spaces that are required for each single family dwelling, we're requiring an additional half space per bedroom or sleeping area that would be required with a minimum of one. So here I have two examples, a two bedroom hosted sharing unit that the property owner is renting just one room. So they would be required to have the two spaces required by the ordinance plus a half space. But because of that one minimum, they would be required to have three total off street parking spaces. The, and the, the second example is an unhosted sharing. So they've gone down to St. George for the winter and they're renting out their four bedroom house. So they're required, they're only required to have two spaces, even though they have two bedrooms for a single family residence. But this proposed short term rental ordinance would require an additional two spaces, a half space for each bedroom. So, so you know, four divided by two is, sorry, I'm getting my head all sorts of wrapped around that. Never mind, math is hard. We deal with colors. So, um, yeah, so there, there, you have to have a total of four. So additional regulations, urgent response, I kind of touched on that briefly. We do require that during the application process that they provide us contact information for somebody that would be available 24/7, 365 to respond to complaints. Second was a nameplate, a three by five card type thing with contact information for the owner or the representative. And then also providing us the same type of welcome packet that they would be, that Airbnb requires that each, that each host gives out. We would like a copy of that so that we know what's being given to show that they're showing the, you know, garbage collection times and having that information to contact the, the host if they need to. So we'll go back to another question here. If the city receives a certain number of valid co-complaints about a permitted short term rental unit, should the owner have their permit revoked? Overwhelmingly, 83, almost 84% said yes. So, oh, of course, yeah. So yeah, 84% about said yes, 5% said no, and about 10% said they don't know.
All right, thanks.
Yeah. So that leads into kind of our enforcement that we've, I've worked with the attorney's office on how best to do this, to craft this. So each day of operation, when you're having offense constitutes a separate offense. For the first violation, it would be an infraction of $500. This includes operating without a license. Second violation would be an infraction of $750. If you have a third violation, it's another $750. And revocation or not allowed to obtain a, an STR permit for two years. And then anything after that becomes a class B misdemeanor and a fine of $1,000. And you are not allowed to ever apply for a short term rental license in the city of Murray.
And how would these fines be collected? Would we, would the city have to go to court on every one of them to collect them?
I would defer to probably GL on that one. I don't, I don't recall how in these infractions type things work.
That's a, that's a criminal citation that would go to justice court.
So regardless of how many, it's kind of where I have a, I, I like the fine, but where I have a problem with is fines are one thing, but trying to collect them, sometimes it costs a lot more to collect them than the city gets. And it's just an exercise in futility and, and ties up our, both our legal department and your department.
Sure. Yeah, and I understand that. And I, I would hope that this is more of a deterrent than it is that this happens. I think we would really try to make it so that we're not getting to this point. Cause we do understand that the, the attorney's office is very busy with, with a lot of different cases and things like that. So that would, this would be kind of a last resort and would be seen more as a deterrent. But it could be a possibility that it's used.
Like, I'm not trying to read your mind, but I can see you had a few guys. But I'm here to tell you, this is a lot of workload for you guys, like a lot.
Yeah, but resources and code enforcement are always a concern and we don't have a lot of bandwidth. So a, a few things on this. One, over the years, as short term rental companies have evolved, they've become more and more sophisticated. So the people who are using their properties as a rental income have a huge incentive to be a good renter, to be a good steward of the property that they're offering for overnight rentals. When short term rentals first came about, that really wasn't the case. So a lot of those companies that you hear frequently that do these types of rentals, Airbnb, VRBO, they have like a rating system where they will not only rate the person who is renting, but people who rent as well. And that I think has really helped to assist the whole short term rental industry to have fewer bad actors than what has been previously, especially when they were a very new thing. So I, I think what this does really is motivate people to have a good rental. If they are having either, you know, they're not operating well or they are renting to individuals who aren't being good tenants. This gives them, I think, more leverage to go in and remedy the situation because they don't want to lose that revenue opportunity. So I, I think it really, we do have code enforcement cases that come through on this a handful of year, a handful a year. We've had some who have responded and said, okay, I understand, thank you, it's illegal, I won't do it anymore. We have had other people who have literally just said, you can't stop me and I'm going to continue to do it. And what are you going to do about it? And so we feel like having, and going back to the enforcement, right? We feel like having this ordinance in place will actually give us tools and resources that we don't currently have in order to effectively manage some of the instances where there are bad actors, if, if you will, with that term. As far as enforcement and regulation, they're also, part of the short term rental industry has come about. There are these companies that will essentially do regulatory enforcement for you. And for the most part, at no charge, although like no, no direct charge to the city. But that charge would be if we were to enter into some type of an agreement with one of these companies like Granicus that gave us some of the data we've used in the presentation. There's, there's Host Compliance, there's a number of those companies out there. If we were to enter into a contract with them, a lot of their regulatory enforcement would be done through them. And the permit fees that they pay to own, or not to own, but to operate their short term rental are what covers those fees to help the outside third party organization regulate. So in that case, the bandwidth for enforcement could be alleviated through going through a third party. And I don't, at this point, it's very difficult for us to say, since we've never had this in place, whether or not we would need to go to those levels. That's something that I think we would just kind of have to gauge as, if this were to be put in place as rentals came online and people started being aware that they needed to be permitted. And we just kind of have to see how that goes. But there are some, I think, easy answers to having that enforcement and regulatory assistance that we would have from an outside third party. Now there does come a point in time when those cases become severe enough that a third party can't do the enforcement and it has to get kicked back to us for, for things. But, but the industry, as I said, itself, the short term industry has become very sophisticated. And so there, there are some options that we could look at. And it's just an unknown right now because we wouldn't know how many, right? We could still have 150 out there and 140 choose not to get permitted or licensed. And we never know about those other ones until some type of a complaint or, you know, a regulatory issue arises in which then we can go in and seek them out. Because as Zach said, the state several years ago put legislation in place that really tied the hands of.
Is that still out there?
Yes.
So you can't go looking on a site or anything just?
No, and part of that actually, there was some, I mean, negotiations between the state, between the lobbying agencies for the short term rental businesses. And essentially, and, and this is why we're in a difficult situation because we know that these exist and we can't, we can't do any enforcement. When all of that regulations were, when all of those legislation and regulations were in place at the state level, at the same time, the State Office of Tourism entered into contracts with these short term rental companies. And they collect transient room tax and remit it to us, to, well, to any, any city, any municipality or county where those short term rentals are taking place, regardless of what ordinances exist locally. And so we, we don't have a choice in whether or not we receive that TRT. It comes to us by default through the state tax commission. And so we can't go and say to someone who is working through one of these short term rental agencies that remits their short term or their transient room taxes to them, then it comes, you know, through the tax commission back to us. We can't, we can't go in and, and regulate or essentially force compliance to not operating one because we're accepting taxes that they're remitting in a roundabout way. So it gets, it gets at least from the tax end complicated. And with the enforcement end, because of that tax, it gets very complicated for us. So the best way for us as staff to have enforcement ability through these situations that do come up where there are legitimate concerns is to have an ordinance in place.
Okay, we've got two minutes.
Okay, I'll wrap it up real quick then. I'll just.
That'd be good.
So just the process to operate an STR, we're suggesting a, a staff level approval with an application, parking plan, things like that, that's required. I will, the planning commission held a public hearing on August 19th. Notices were mailed to the affected entities. One public comment was received in support of the regulations. The planning commission ultimately voted four to three to recommend denial of the proposed ordinance. Findings here, we, we find that, you know, they're in harmony with objective 11 that would help stimulate reinvestment in deteriorating areas of the city. Also objective three, that encourages housing options for a variety of age, family and, family size and financial levels. And objective one of the moderate income housing element to ensure housing affordability targets are achievable using a range of strategies. So there's two recommendations here. There's the recommendation by the planning commission with a vote of four to three for the council to deny the proposed text amendment. And then also our recommendation based on the background staff review and findings that you approved the proposed text amendment. So I've done that in 30 seconds. that you approved the proposed text amendment. So I've done that in thirty seconds. So what questions can I answer for you?
Okay, we've got one minute. And I know there's going to be a lot of questions, so I know I have a lot of questions. So I'm wondering, yeah, I think we're going to need more time.
Yeah, I think so too.
And so I think we should continue this. And also another thing to consider is the legislature convenes in January. And I'm wondering if, you know, we go through all this and then they just come and usurp everything we've done. If that might be something we should also consider. So we can
So I'll let Rosalind, because she keeps saying, yeah, you think we should continue it also then?
Yeah, I think we should continue. There are, there's a lot of converse questions.
I'm good with that.
I agree. There's one thing I I would like to see, though, as we continue this, I'd like when we first started this, I thought we had a, an idea of only owner occupied rentals. And I'd like to see you go back to that, because people live in a neighborhood and they want that neighborhood to be a neighborhood. So I think we ought to think real hard about going back to just doing that and looking at this survey and reading some of the responses, it's
There are a lot of
Yeah.
A lot of negative on that, but
There were a lot of concerns. Kat?
Dale, by owner occupied, do you mean the hosted sharing only? Is that what you're referring to? Okay, I just want to make sure I was on the same page. By continuing, do you mean continuing right now or putting it on the agenda again? I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Put it on the agenda again, and I'm wondering if we should wait till after the legislature convenes to see what they end up doing about it. You know, they may, like I said, usurp whatever we do. It's been known to happen.
So so let me, let me just ask a quick question then. So wait till around March or so, until they're finished, until the legislative session's complete, and then bring it back to committee of the whole. Is that what you'd like to kind of see?
I think that makes sense if the rest of the council agrees.
I only hesitate with that of waiting for the legislature in, if these are tools that are helpful for enforcing what they can't enforce right now. I hate to withhold that tool longer, waiting for what may or may not happen. So that's my only hesitancy with that timeline.
Well, and that was one of my questions is how many are in violation and how many calls are getting called, so.
Well, and I don't, my biggest concern is that we jump into this, I'm not ready by any means. I don't even know if I'd be ready in two weeks. I, there's a lot of stuff, and I'm, I don't know the timeframe, but I'm telling you, yeah, I would be ready. I need more time, but I, I mean, I like, I don't know. Are you sure they're bringing, I mean, are you pretty sure they're bringing it up in the session?
I I'm eighty five percent sure it's going to come, it's going to come forward. I mean, you never know what the legislature that's a whole beast.
It is. But if it's going to come up, I'm not, and I don't disagree with that. I didn't realize it was going to come up.
I know, I wasn't aware of that either.
GL, a quick question. Were you at the most recent LPC meeting this past Monday? Did they bring it up there? I wasn't able to listen to it, so I don't know if they brought it up.
But they have brought it up before.
Yeah, okay.
I think the one previously talked about it.
Okay. Jared wants to say something.
Just, now I'm going to be faster than you're used to me being.
Hi, Jared.
But I have the, I have the pleasure of dealing with the code enforcement stuff more often in our division than others. It is not, in terms of code enforcement, they're they're difficult cases when they come up because of that issue that Zach described, and then Melinda talked about with the the tools that we don't have. But we do not have tons of code enforcement cases from them. It's one of the, it's one of the least common ones that we get at this point. We get complaints, but not nearly like we do for weeds or or illegal businesses or whatever else.
Then I say
So it's not a real pressing issue at this point.
Not from a code enforcement standpoint.
Then I'd say wait until, if it was something that was pressing, I'd say wait also till after the session.
Okay, then how about I kind of give an update around January, when I get an idea of of what's going on at the legislature? I can come back to you guys and give an update on what's going on with short term rentals, and we can decide from there.
I do want to thank you for all the hard work you've done on this.
Thank you, Zach.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Thanks, Zach.
Let's continue on, and we have discussion on the proposed zone map amendment for fifty eight twenty nine and fifty eight thirty seven South Majestic Pine Drive. And Jared.
It's just, just, just going to be me. And my slides are not as impressive as Zach's. I'm just going to forewarn you right now for that. But this is, this is a request for a zone map amendment on those addresses, and I'm going to skip this part other than just to point out that it is currently, the properties that we're talking about are the parcels, the portions of property we're talking about are zoned RM ten. And the request is to zone them R one eight. Basically to match the properties that they're going to be aggregated to, and that's really the crux of this application. This portion in the back that you can see is is the property that we're asking to change the zoning on. And that is related to the properties that are on either side of it. The McDonald's and the Hanson's have purchased this lot between them for the purpose of keeping it from becoming a flag lot, if I'm not to put too fine a point on it, but they would like to see it stay the the way it is. So to do that, they bought it, and it has associated with it this other, these other pieces that are in that wrong zone, in the RM ten zone, because they were part of a different subdivision that was all in that RM ten zone. So that is really in order to make the lot line adjustments and the lot combinations that they would like to do to make these back parcels now part of their the lot that they're going to then adjust these lines between them and just own as part of their existing properties. We don't want to do that as staff until it matches the right zoning. So Susan, who, Susan Nixon in our office, who handles all of our lot line adjustments, has been working with them to get these zones changed so that we can then process what they wanted to do in the first place and just basically make all of that property become part of their existing two lots. And that is, these are just some pictures of the property. You can see it's kind of a nice big wooded area back there, and they've used it different ways, and they want to see it remain that way. That's a different sort of approach. You don't see that a lot. It's not often that we see down zoning to keep things the way they are.
And you don't see very often where some of them, well, we'll just buy it then, and
Yeah.
We usually can't do that, so.
Right. It's it's an, it's a different situation for us, but it it works. We're supportive of the application. We did have a public hearing. There were no public comments received from it, was voted to recommend approval by the Planning Commission. It does meet the the general plan objectives. It doesn't violate anything or cause any problems for that. We've made these findings that you can see there on the screen. It complies with the zoning and, or with the respected, sorry, the proposed zoning. And staff has recommended, along with the Planning Commission, that you approve the zone map amendments. Any questions about how that all works back there with the the combinations? We just, we'd process those, and you wouldn't see those. Those would be administrative staff level things after, but we didn't want to do them till the zones changed.
Yeah, it's a lovely area. It's my old stomping ground, and so I, it's really so pretty back there, but how nice for them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions, then thank you.
I had the really easy part tonight.
Okay, Jennifer, do we have any announcements? Okay, no announcements, so we will adjourn. Thank you.